Okay, all right, we'll start the July 12th Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just make sure to speak in your microphones tonight with the larger group here. All right. Okay. The first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there anything that anybody wanted to add? Okay, then I need a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 7th. I hadn't seen anything that I thought needed to be hugely corrected, anything that anybody else had?
I didn't see anything.
Okay.
I do not either.
I, yeah, I'm okay, thanks. All right, then I need a motion to approve those.
I move we approve the meetings from June 7th.
Okay. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then, we have now what's termed on the agenda as old business, but it's for the Elum Augustana Care Application for Site Plan Review, Preliminary Plat, that kind of thing, public hearing as well. And usually what we do is we'll have staff give background information. We'll have, we'll open the public hearing, take comments from the Elum people, they'll be answering questions if we have questions. But also then if anyone is here from the neighborhood, the public, we'll have you also be able to ask questions and address us. At some point, the public hearing part will be closed, but we'll still have conversation and go on and hopefully the Elum people would be able to remain. And if you do have a question or a comment, coming up to the podium and stating your name and then asking your questions, so that's kind of how we'll do it.
Do we also do, excuse me Chair, do we also ask them to state their address too?
Um, yes, yeah. Thank you. Okay, go ahead Mark.
Great, thank you. Honorable Chair Commissioners, as you know, this item is coming back in front of you tonight after being tabled at a previous Planning Commission meeting because of some changes that were being made to the primary new east-west road in this development. But just as a brief overview of the development again, the city has a request in front of it to consider site plan review for a new multi-family senior housing development consisting of approximately 135 assisted living, independent living, and memory care units. And then with that, a preliminary plat to allow the subdivision of the subject properties such that it can accommodate the development of the proposed senior housing and then also essentially set up the remaining property for future mixed-use development. So the property itself is located at 1425 Baker Park Road and the property north of that as well. It's a combination of a couple properties that are going to be essentially replatted, so if you think about it, they're going to be combined and then broken back up into a configuration that allows the proposed development. The property itself is zoned mixed-use gateway and it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as mixed-use. So the overall property that we're looking at, the two sites that are kind of identified on this map in the blue outline, this entire area is approximately 20 acres in overall area. It includes what is currently the city's park-and-ride site located here, as well as right-of-way, which is Oak Street right-of-way, that is an undeveloped right-of-way that the city has from, had been platted previously. With that, the property that the Elum Care Augustana is looking to break off is approximately seven and a half acres of that overall 20. So the site plan review component of it really looks, is looking at the Elum site and how it complies with the city's standards and ordinances relating to site plan. And then it's looking at the preliminary plat as it relates to just overall, how is the site and the parcels being created compliant with the requisite standards for that. So since our last meeting, the city has worked with Hennepin County and the City of Medina to essentially come to an agreement on the location of a intersection that's going to facilitate the development of both the east and west sides of Baker Park Road. And the location of that intersection was critical in this development because Hennepin County had stated that they would like to see one aligned intersection that would serve both the property that is in Medina, which they have commercial property on the east side of County Road 29, and then on the west side Maple Plains property. And so when we had initially looked at this development from the development side on the Maple Plains side, we had met with Hennepin County and talked about setbacks from Highway 12. And when the city and the developer first started laying out this proposed new east-west city street, we were trying to push the intersection as far north of Highway 12 as possible because Hennepin County standard suggests that you have to be 600 feet setback from an intersection. Medina and the City of Medina has an alignment that is closer to the intersection than 600 feet and is not as ideal of a location for an intersection as the intersection that was proposed by the city. But they felt that it was the best possible location for a intersection and ultimately the cities and Hennepin County came to an agreement on trying to put it in a location that would serve both sides of the road. So that was a lot of why we tabled this, went back and tried to figure out a solution that would satisfy both sides of the road and ultimately set both properties on the east and west side up for future development. And it took some considerable effort from the applicant in order to try to get that put back together then, because just every aspect of the development, even though very, very similar to what was seen previously, was, had to be redone in some manner. And so because of that, as you know, we've been working on the city's side to try to make this happen and the developers working on their side to try to make this happen and still stay on a timeline that works for everyone. So with that, we've got a new alignment of what is called Gateway Boulevard. This would be a new city street, which would be an east-west street that would bisect a portion of this property. It would provide now this unified intersection at this location that would serve the existing retail and commercial property on the east side as well as future development on that, on those properties that are available for development in Medina. And then it would serve the Elum property as well as the existing commercial retail property and grocery store and then set the corner up, if you will, for future development in, on both sides of this future, or on both sides of this proposed east-west road. The other function of this east-west road is it will also accommodate a relocated park-and-ride facility. The relocated park-and-ride facility is going from a site that was two acres in size in this location with approximately 150 parking spaces down to a location that has a bus drop-off and integrated parking into the city right-of-way that's going to provide for a total of 50 spaces in its ultimate build-out, although initially only about 20 spaces are being built with this development. And we've shown where additional spaces can be added if the warrant arises in the future. And that would be something that the city and Metro Transit would work on in the future if it was to be, if it was found to be necessary or if ridership started to increase on the route or they changed the routes and added routes. But even in their kind of fully built-out best-case scenario, Metro Transit identified a need for a maximum of 50 spaces. So this new east-west road is kind of a critical element and a critical link in this development. One of the things you'll also note is that this road goes directly in front of the existing retail grocery store that's on the property to the west here. And that area then in front of the store is going to become a public right-of-way with a public street. It's going to be unique in that sense because we're going into a parking lot, taking out what is kind of a drive aisle of sorts and creating a public street. But the intent of that public street is to really create a, what I would call an urban kind of design element rather than more of a suburban design element. So it's going to function more like a main street where you have buildings in close proximity to the road, parking directly off of that, a little bit wider sidewalk on the sides of that to facilitate, you know, pedestrian activity in front of the existing commercial and retail. And so it's going to have more of a, what I would call kind of small-town main street function rather than a commercialized strip mall or suburban-type setting. And that was, that's strategically planned and talked about by the developer, the owners of the property, and the city. So that new Boulevard, it has been kind of, the alignment so to speak, has been kind of locked in now. The intersection onto County Road 29 has been locked in and the plans that are before us tonight have that. As it relates then to the rest of the development, the footprint of the building, the parking in front, the parking behind, and a lot of the functionality that we talked about about the building in our previous meeting didn't change. What did change is some of the stormwater requirements as a result of the shifting of the road. And so some of the ponding, some of the calculations, some of the infrastructure that is going to serve this property as well as being set up for future development did shift and change. From a layperson's standpoint, it's not perceivable on, if you really studied these plans on how much it changed. But it did change, so we did another kind of full review of the plan set. And I'll just highlight a couple of kind of key things that we looked at in the review. For the most part, grading and drainage and the utilities, there are still detailed items that need to be ultimately finalized between the city and the developer. We've got some additional comments, we've got some information that they're still working to provide, but it's at a pretty detailed kind of construction plan level, nothing that would have impact on the layout, the plat, or the overall, I guess, general site design. So we're working on some of those details with the applicant. We did get, between the time of the writing of the report and this presentation, the lighting and landscape plan, and I'm going to touch on those up here. I did get comments also on those from one of our other commissioners that I'll share with you as well on the landscape plan and some of the layout items. Outside of that, when we wrote our initial comment letter to the applicant, we've been working with the applicant on going through this, there was a handful of things that we talked about as it related to the site layout. A couple of those things were width of the sidewalk and width of the trail, location of the sidewalks along the new east-west Boulevard, the width of the trail that is going to run north and south along County Road 29. We talked about some of the just detailed items relating to parking along the road. And then we also have had an opportunity to get feedback and comments from Metro Transit relating to the bus drop-off area. And all of those comments have been addressed by the applicant and are now incorporated into this plan set. So for the most part, the majority of the initial comments that we had and we discussed a little bit in the last meeting that we had have been addressed now on this plan set. There are a couple items that we identified in the plan review relating more so to the site design and layout that I'd like to talk about a little bit. And I won't go into any of the really distinctive details like labeling of certain stormwater structures or things like that that we're still working through. But as it relates to the east-west road, one of the things we noted was this design here in front of the existing grocery store and retail buildings, we noted that they are proposing a couple of islands as end cap, so to speak, on the existing parking lot. If you drive into that parking lot now, there is no separation of any kind, and when I mean separation, either curbing, landscaping, or other, between the front door of the building and the sidewalk there and then any of the parking spaces. Pardon?
Except the paddles.
Yeah, except for the paddles. There is striping in that parking lot, but that's really the only delineation in that area. So the applicant added in three landscape islands that would be located at the end of the existing parking lot rows. We noted that those islands are fairly narrow and probably in that form don't accommodate landscaping of any significance. But we also noted that there are some areas, this area in particular, that is somewhat unprotected from the public street. And there actually is an end cap here that is unprotected from the public street. So we're recommending that we work with the applicant to just revise this plan to show where the parking's going to go in the parking lot and then ensure that we have a distinguishable barrier between the end of the parking and what is now a public street versus what used to be just a drive aisle in a, in a commercial parking lot. And so that's one of the comments that we wanted to talk about tonight and kind of point out. And I do have a comment also from Stephen relating to that. Outside of kind of that detail with the site plan-related items, there are no other, what I would call kind of distinguishable items that from a staff level we felt were outstanding at this point. This was one of the items that was most notable, most notable that we want to be able to get some resolution on. So with that, the applicant did submit a landscape plan, which we had commented and talked about at the last meeting. We had some comments on the landscape plan, so I'd like to pull up the landscape plan. I was just going to kind of show what has been updated on that plan. You see it? No. Oh, okay. All right, we're going to find it. One of the things that we talked about, and I'll just kind of talk through it a little bit, was screening and buffering of the neighboring properties to the north. The revised and updated landscaping now provides much more screening and buffering of the properties, the residential homes to the north. And so from a just kind of conceptual side, they did respond to our request that there needed to be more landscaping along that north property line, and they did add quite a bit of landscaping. I did note in the plan, there's a retaining wall that is adjacent to the parking lot right in the middle of that parking area. And there's a gap kind of in what is shown there. And I think that's a comment that we want to look for maybe additional landscaping in that area. That was also one of Stephen's comments in reviewing that. But outside of, outside of that, that was one of our more, that was one of the comments, I think, that we had impressed upon the applicant in the last meeting is that we needed to have better screening and buffering of that particular area. So if we can pull it up, we can walk through it a little bit. Okay, it's coming up. Can you go down one maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, read, no? Up one.
This is the first page.
Okay, I don't know if you, can you zoom in? I just want to kind of highlight that area a little bit.
Which area?
The back area.
Oh, okay.
I think in the blow-up section it looks a little bigger, but maybe not. So this is that north property line that we had talked about previously. There's a parking area on the north side, which is really a service drive and then staff parking primarily. So they've added quite a bit of landscaping.
A lot of trees, I see.
Yeah, between the parking lot and the property line to the north. This area is harder to see, the trees are on there. I think on the print you can read them better.
Yeah, yes.
There's again another cluster of trees located in this area, both evergreen and a deciduous mix. The one area that didn't have any trees was this area here, and we know there's a wall and some grades in that area, but again, that was kind of, that's something I think we would want to maybe see some additional landscaping added, given its visibility kind of into the main, you know, access point, mechanical area and everything else of the site. This landscaping and screening that's proposed here will start to provide, you know, some real buffer and so will what's on this side. One of the things to note again, the building as it's proposed, this wing of the building here is a taller, higher wing, that's the three-story, but as you get over to this side of the building, it's a one-story building. So when you're thinking about it from like a mass and a scale standpoint, this part of the building on this side that is directly adjacent to the existing residential homes is of a lower height. And as you'll recall or note, the residential homes, there's two homes located on this corner. Those are owned by the owner of the remaining property here. And are going to at some point be redeveloped into more mixed-use zoning. But the rest of the zoning, including the residential houses all the way to Main Street, are guided for mixed-use.
Yes.
Same designation as this property and would accommodate and allow for uses similar to the use that's being proposed. So this plan, we haven't gotten kind of final review comments. We got it this week, but we do acknowledge that it does, for the most part, address comments that we made during the initial review of this plan. The applicant also provided for pretty significant and detailed courtyard design elements in these areas, which are very elaborately designed landscape gardens that have a lot of perennial and other ornamental plantings, which is a nice element. The main spine in the parking lot will also have landscaping and trees coming into that as well as trees within the islands in the parking lot. And then we did ask for additional trees to be located on this elevation, noting that that's the tallest elevation in, of the plan. So it's going to be the most kind of visibly taller elevation, and so we were looking at trying to reduce that by bringing in some landscape plants that would scale up and eventually try to offset a little bit of that height. Couple other things that were updated when this got redrawn, setbacks changed a little bit. And so we outlined the setbacks that are being proposed in the, as it relates to the proposed building. And the setbacks in general meet all of the requirements of the city as it relates to building setback from adjacent property lines. The, one thing that we noted in here and we'll talk to the applicant about, I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that can't be addressed, is the parking setback adjacent to the north property line. There's a small section of that parking lot that is required to be 10 feet from the parking, or from the north property line, it's 13 feet. I'm sorry, it's eight feet, so it's got an offset in that. And so I think that's something that can be ultimately addressed. But all other applicable building setbacks actually increased from the original plan and that's just a matter of how those boundary lines were drawn. So just a brief overview then of the building itself. The building has a breakdown of the types of units that are on-site. Eighty care center plus memory care, 39 assisted living, 21 independent living units is the breakdown. So that's just a general overview of the types of units that are going to be located within the building. And then from, I guess, just a building architecture standpoint, we covered that, I think, for the most part in the last presentation, and none of that has changed in what was revised. They didn't change the exterior building architecture. But we showed in the report how it met the intent of the downtown design, or of the design guidelines that the city has relating to types of materials on the front facade and then the other three building facades. And so that's all broken down and all of that met the applicable requirements relating to that. So I won't go through details unless there's questions on that. If I could, just with a couple of comments relating to Stephen, if you want me to just touch on those real quick before we get into the details. Could you throw up just the general site plan again?
Like the first page?
Yeah. So can you zoom in right on this area maybe? So I talked through the plans with Stephen, he had put together comments for us to look at. There are some more detailed comments that I won't go into that are just kind of noted for us to provide back to the applicant, but one of his questions or thoughts for the Planning Commission, he wanted me to express it, was the area in front of the buildings in this location, one of his thoughts, just from a bigger picture standpoint, he noted that this sidewalk's narrow in front of the existing retail spaces that are there and then again in front of the grocery store. And his one thought was either eliminate the parking and expand the pedestrian experience in front of that building so there is a usable pedestrian area, or shift this road slightly south to accommodate a little bit wider sidewalk in front of those retail buildings. And his comment was just based more on that idea that we're trying to create a main street feel in front. And he thought if these businesses here wanted to have something similar to like patio seating or anything like that, like we have on our main street in downtown, that that area should be big enough to accommodate it. And he thought that would help with some of the kind of feel of that. And so I told him I would express that thought or idea to the Planning Commission tonight. Outside of that, most of the comments I've either touched on in my report or were detailed enough that, that not really needed to be talked about. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you want me to go into more detail on what we had talked about previously or if there's other questions relating to what they presented in this go-around, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, okay, why don't we, as they come up?
Okay.
I'll open the public hearing at 6:30. Did you want to, those of you from Elum, do you want to make a comment or a statement or do you want to just see what people have to say or ask questions, just kind of be the resource?
Yeah. Just take a quick second to introduce myself. My name's Andrew Santani, I'm the VP of Construction at Elum Augustana. Thank you again, it's good to be back in front of you. I know we needed a few last-minute things sorted out and I'm thankful that we were able to do that in the timeframe that we did. Appreciate all the effort from the staff of the City of Maple Plains to make that happen and work with us to get in front of you again tonight. And thanks for coming in the rain to hear this, so. But yeah, more than happy to answer any questions that might be out there, so.
Okay, good, thanks. Does anybody in the audience have a question, a comment, concern? Come on up.
Judy Sutherland and I live on Main Street. Are we only going to have one road in on this side or are we keep, because right now we have two. You come in one side for the grocery store and go out. So is there only one exit to all of this?
It'll be a through street.
Are you asking Judy if there's one down here?
Well, are they going to close the one down? Yes, are they closing that?
No, not initially. Initially, that is not supposed to be closed.
Okay, because we plow snow there, so I'm wondering, how do we get in if you're going to close that? Or that one will stay open?
It should stay open.
Yeah, at this time, our intent is not to close it. I don't know if the owners have anything different in what they're thinking about at this time, but...
So you'll come in and out that same one, because there's no...
You won't be able to access the new road.
The new road from the parking lot, so there'll only be the one...
You will be able to access the new road. So these are, these are drive lanes right now that would be still there in the parking lot. So you would, even if you, even if they close this, you would come in here, you could come down, go through the whole parking lot, come back out. So there still would be pretty, pretty much the same, yeah.
Off the new road. Okay, that's what I was wondering, and I couldn't see the, all right, thank you.
Mark, did you know that the...
Mark, did you know that the, the roads that you're going in and out are one-way? The south one, or, yeah, the south one is the going in and the north one is coming out of the parking lot?
Correct, and that's going to change when this goes to a two-lay, two-lane, two-way intersection. So it's going to be a full two-way street and that, that will no longer be just a one-way out access. The one in isn't proposed to change at this time, so that would be just what it is. But the, the one here is going to be a full city street access point.
Other comments or questions? How about our group? You asked one of the questions that I had, whether or not the in-out, was it, was the in going to disappear kind of thing? So that answered one for me. Okay, I'm wondering if there's nobody else has a question? One of the questions that, that I had in, in how we're doing this or, you know, the recommendations that we'll make to the council. Are we looking at, yes, we're agreeing or not agreeing to recommend that as the plat, you know, as this appears, yea or nay kind of thing? Or does it have to do too with, you know, vacating the street or the city council takes care of that? And so we don't have to do any of that? I kind of took that, since it wasn't here, that it wasn't our job, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Chair, the, the city council, I mean, you, you were reviewing site plan for all aspects of site plan, which are the, the items that we identified in the, in the packet and then everything else related to that. The, the plat itself, this is somewhat unique. I mean, the city has been heavily involved in trying to help develop this new boulevard. So that's a lot of the reason how, why this is getting platted. And then the site itself is really, as long as it meets the minimum lot size and everything else like that, there, we don't, and, and we get all the drainage and utilities and everything, there isn't much to that.
Okay.
We are creating new lots out of this, so we have to be comfortable with the lots that are being created. So there's, you know, Al Lot A, Al Lot B, and then the new Elum site, and then north of that is Al Lot C. So we are creating several lots, but those Al Lots really can't do much more until they would come back with site plan for anything that would occur on those. And then as it relates to the street vacation, we do have the Oak Street right-of-way and that would, we've noticed the public hearing, but that does occur only at the city council.
Okay, and that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Then with the, the entrance and, and the road, entrance and exit, I suppose, on 229, which is going to be just north of the, like, little strip in the gas station, right?
Yep, so.
So how, it, it isn't like, it's not just a, like, right-in, right-out? It's, there'll be left-turn lanes, there'll be markings, is the road widened at all?
So in talking to Anaban County, I mean, ultimately, this intersection is going to have, I mean, this road section is going to have to be updated in some format. There's a couple of factors that play into what's going to happen initially. So right now, this intersection is going to align, do we have the aerial? It's in the report. It's going to align just north of what I call the subway building?
Yeah.
For lack of a better description.
Right.
So that's the location that that's, that new intersection's going to occur. And the long-term or ultimate plan for that intersection is that the subway, or the Holiday subway entrance that comes in here is going to get restricted to a right-in, right-out only. Because it's too close to the Highway 12 intersection.
That's what I wondered about.
So this, you can see actually, there's a half-section of right-of-way right here, north of the building. And the ultimate plan from a Medina standpoint, and I can only speak to what they've shown us, is that this would, they'd have a loop road that would go back behind the subway building, behind the Holiday. It would serve this property and this property and potentially that property at some point, if it were to ever develop. So we're coming in with our new access point right in this location.
Okay.
And so that, that would be a four-way intersection. It's not going to be a controlled intersection at first. The intent would be then to re-stripe the existing road in a kind of interim, or for an interim period that would allow a left-turn lane into this site and a right-turn lane, or a left-turn lane onto our road and a right-turn lane onto our road. We can't do the full rebuild until Medina builds this road, because we can't shut off access to the Holiday as a full access until this one becomes available. When that happens, then the, the county will have to decide how that's going to get done, whether it's Medina or they do it. So we, we're, we're doing what the county's asking us to do, which is kind of an interim re-stripping of County Road 29. There is enough width to do this re-stripping, but, but it's, it's going to be kind of an interim solution. It's not a permanent, because it's not probably perfectly ideal with, you know, kind of a final standard.
Okay, all right. What is it that you're looking for or are you wondering about in terms of the, this one?
Is there any other thoughts or comments on?
Other than to make them wider?
Well, no, just to, to fully close that off. I mean, I think from the city's standpoint, we, we pointed out that right now there's a big opening up against our public street with no defined edge. And that wouldn't be a typical scenario. So we just need to, we need to figure out that edge. These islands begin to do that and, and I think are in keeping with what we had talked about. But we're talking about the extension of that in some manner, or some way to delineate.
So you're, you're thinking of, of like, the little oval things, just keep doing that all the way down?
Yeah, so, so in the, in the, in the current condition of that parking lot, there are five drive aisles, and they show, so there's like a drive aisle right here and parking spaces that go up against the, the edge of the lawn.
Yeah.
Then there's a double bay of parking spaces, then another drive aisle, then a double bay of parking spaces, another drive aisle. So that's three, and then a double bay of parking spaces, another drive aisle, that's four. And then there's another double bay of parking spaces and a fifth drive aisle. So we're just asking how that last bay, last kind of bay of parking spaces and drive aisle, we're looking at just being consistent all the way across?
I, I think that makes perfect sense. And, and it would be clearer for the driver, drivers as well, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and takes away the wiggle room for people to.
Yeah, because it's converting from a, a parking lot drive aisle to a city street, we're looking for definition on its edges like you'd find in a typical city street section. And we understand this is a unique situation, but it's something that we want to keep working on. So I, I wanted to point out as a site plan-related idea. The point that Stephen had made was kind of a different point, which is that the sidewalk in front of the retail space is about eight feet wide, is what we decided. And that is probably too narrow to accommodate, say, a sidewalk in, maybe an outdoor seating area or something. And if you think about like our Main Street section, McGarry's, the width there and then they have tables and things like that, it's a wider section. And his point was this, he believes warrants something similar.
Can you move the road?
I don't know. I'm, I'm not looking at the applicant to ask, but. We're, we're talking about a couple of feet though, one way or the other, I think. And keeping the parking there or not keeping the parking there. The parking would make it convenient and more like a Main Street section if you had the angled parking there. But the eight-foot is narrow to accommodate, to accommodate seating and walkway, right? So for example, the new Forkless Restaurants that is in that strip mall would like outdoor seating, so.
Well, there is that, like, berm or the grass park.
Yeah, on the other side.
On the other side, or right at the end of the parking lot.
I don't know that you need the parking in the front of the buildings. I would rather see the sidewalk if you're going to enlarge it and then just take away that parking in front of it. There's no parking in front of the store.
There is not, you're right.
So they would park to the south?
In the parking lot.
And then walk across?
Right.
Okay. That works too? Then it's, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when I think of down low, yeah, at Colburn's, it is confusing a little bit when you're driving through that road and they're backing out at you instead of in the parking lot.
Right. Yeah, I understand what your point is up against the building. Yeah.
One of the, one of the questions, and, and it's not necessarily something that you would even know, but with Metro Transit and how all of this will be set differently, do, would the bus come in and go back out off of Baker? They wouldn't go all the way through, they would go through?
So we set this up to be right-turn friendly, which is bus driver-friendly.
Yes.
So they would come down now, Highway 12, they would turn in on, on Howard and turn now on our new Gateway Boulevard. The drop-off or the pickup, drop-off is here, so they'd make a right, make a right, come in, swing into their little pull-off, do their pickup and drop-off, come over to this intersection, make a right turn out, and then that gives them a signalized intersection to get back on 12. So that's what they want. Whereas they do the same thing now in their parking lot, they, they have a turn here, but they're making a left turn across traffic to get in. And then they come back out. So this actually is more user-friendly for them than what they have currently.
Okay, that's good.
Excuse me, can I ask the committee to speak? We can't hear what you're saying. We hear Mark. He's only, I think you've got to be two inches away from your speaker.
I, I know, and I apologize. I have a thing about something in my face.
I know, but we can't hear you, so I don't know how we're expecting.
I'll try.
Okay, well, we can't hear any of you, so except Mark.
With the parking setback, where you said that, and on the sheet here on page nine, it says that it goes to 13 feet. And, but you said it was eight.
I'm sorry, it's eight feet.
Eight, okay.
So it's right, it's right here.
Okay.
So that, those couple of spaces in this corner, once you get past this corner, the part, property line goes up. So these spaces are fine. These spaces, or this drive aisle is fine, but it's right here that's eight feet.
Okay.
So I just noted, I think there's a lot of solutions to do, to fix that without really any significant impact to the overall. This site is overparked, so at worst case, they would have to maybe move. But I believe that we can fix, we're talking about a two-foot swing. I just noted it. I think it's solvable.
So it's not like a variance thing?
No, I, they're not going to ask for a variance. We're, we'll fix that to be two feet better. And, and it was the only setback that I, I mean, I noted. So all of the, you know, property line setbacks for the building actually increased from the last go-around. This line, I think, adjusted somewhat, Paul, I don't know if that, that's what I noted. And this actually increased, there was a little bit better separation. So they added this second bank of parking and then this little jog here in the line was also a change. So with that, it's just something we caught this time that wasn't on the last plans. But I just wanted to point it out, just in transparency, that there was something that needed to be fixed there. But I don't anticipate that that is a variance.
And then everything got figured out with the trash situation, because I know that was a concern.
So they're proposing a trash enclosure in this location here, along with an enclosure on the mechanical, I'm sorry, it's here. And then enclosure on the mechanical equipment as well. And so that, that did get resolved from our last set of plans where they provided the detail on that.
Okay. And you would come back for signage, or?
If signage doesn't, yeah, any signage that doesn't meet the code requirements would be required to come through this group.
All righty. I liked, by the way, the landscaping a whole bunch. And part of it was, I like, I like that it's not, oh, we're just going to put up a whole bunch of pine trees or evergreens, which are lovely, but we need something else. But I also liked that you had the grasses and the flowers and what you're doing for the residents who will be there. That was one of the things that. Excuse me. Now, my mother had liked at the place she had been, because she used to go and deadhead everything. So look for little ladies who are going to be deadheading things from their wheelchairs.
So can I bring up something that I brought up at the last meeting and basically got shot down? But again, I am reading in my book, and according to that, a church or any religious thing needs a conditional use permit. It says, "This paragraph shall apply even if the religious use does not occupy the entire structure." And to me, if there's a chapel in it, it's a religious part of it. And it needs a conditional use permit. I don't see any way around it.
Yes.
We actually don't have a formal chapel. It's just a community room. Our funding for the project doesn't tolerate that we call it a chapel, because we're looking at using public sale bonds. So it's actually not a chapel, it's a community space. So it's open to the community, so.
Is Elum not a religious background or related?
Yeah, we're owned by the EV Free Church. We do have a chaplain in our staff. They're there full-time, but we're not running a church. We're running senior care.
Can you allow a space for those who would choose to gather of any faith?
Mm-hmm, correct. The funding, the funding that we use.
But the conditional use isn't that big of a deal. I just think in order to follow this, we need it.
But it's not a chapel.
It's not a chapel.
Somebody could come in here if they wanted to and hold a religious type of thing, go into the gym and hold it. And this is not a chapel. It's just using a room.
And since Elum is church-affiliated, does that mean that it is tax-free for property taxes?
Only on the care center side. That's the only side. The whole, the whole building, part of the building, the assisted living and the independent living is taxed. The care center side is tax-exempt because it's a care center, but that's not because we're nonprofit, it's because it's a care center.
And that's, that is accurate. That's how that building will be taxed.
So you do it, um, like, percentage-wise?
Yeah, we have a, a pretty detailed breakdown with, that we. Yeah, we have a, a pretty detailed breakdown with, that we've worked with the city and, and the staff here, kind of showing, uh, square footage breakdowns, um, and acreage breakdowns, which not only do we, are we doing with the city, but we also have to show, um, our, our, um, the lenders need to see that information too. So, you know, we combed through that pretty meticulously. In the state of Minnesota, the, uh, Department of Health reviews that every year, uh, on an annual audit, so...
So, Mark, can we put a conditional use on any building, just for the heck of it? No?
No, I...
I mean, why would we?
Yeah, I, I mean, uh, Ms. I think it's a good point. I think, um, I, at least from my perspective, I don't get, I mean, I, I can make my own interpretation, but ultimately, your council gets to interpret the ordinance. So, um, I think if, you know, if this group made a recommendation to deny based on the idea that they needed a conditional use or made a recommendation to have them get a conditional use, the council would ultimately get to make that interpretation. I think staff's interpretation is that the intent of that provision is if you have a primary use as a, as a religious use, that it is a conditional use. This is, the primary use of this building is clearly for, um, uh, living facilities, so...
But it does say that it does not occupy the entire structure.
I understand, so if you had a building that had, say, a, um, a religious use and part of that building also was a gymnasium or something, I don't know, some other, like, some other function, um, we would still require the conditional use permit. But in this particular case, we're talking about, th- this is, one, not a chapel. They're saying it's a community room. And the primary function of this building is residential. So it's, it, I, I would call it, e- e- even if it was a chapel, I would say that it's, it's not the, um, intent of that ordinance to require the conditional use on something like that. But I, I think because they're not calling it a chapel any longer, it's, it's pretty much a moot point.
I g- I guess my main concern is because of Maple Tears. Was built as a senior building. Maple Plain put money into it. Independence put money into it. And right now, there's not a senior living in there. And nobody would, no senior would want to live in there. So, you know, as, as things sell, you get different owners. Things can really change.
Yeah, they can, but that, that building, isn't that a low-income?
Well, regardless, if the land use, or if the use of the facility changed and it changed to something that is otherwise not a permitted use, so if, let's say it changed to a facility that had, it, it became a chapel, it became a church facility.
Right.
They would have to come forward for a conditional use. So any change in use in the city does require, any commercial change in use, this is a commercial building, even though it's residential, but it requires review of the city.
So one of my questions was, if they expand their chapel, make more, they still have to come in?
Yeah, if this buil- if this building gets expanded, they would be in front of us for site plan review and at which time we would be talking about the use of the building again. Is it still the same use or is it changing? If this goes from senior though, if, if it goes from senior living apartments and memory care to an outright just market rate rental property or something like that, that is still a permitted use in the mixed-use gateway. So that use in and of itself would not change. Um, the use point, but if it did go to, say, a market rate rental property, the parking would be something we'd review. They'd be subject to site plan review because the parking requirements on senior living is not the same as market rate.
And parking was one of my questions with that too. I mean, if they start using what I'll call more public parking, like where the park and ride is on a regular basis, then I think we should have something there that says they can't do that.
So the parking spaces that are going to be set up for the park, park and rides, there's, I don't know the number, twenty-three, twenty?
Twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's twenty space, I, I haven't counted it again, but twenty spaces here. Those are going to be signed for park and ride during, uh, park and ride use hours. They're going to be restricted parking. So they won't be open to the public during those hours. Now, after hours on a weekend, um, when the buses aren't running or after the last bus drop-off, those become, uh, public parking spaces again.